All right. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come to you tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come to get tonight as diverse community, different backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures. Yet one common goal, that is the betterment of the city. We come to get tonight to seek guidance, wisdom, and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening. And in doing so, we lift up Councilmember Fitzgerald, Councilmember Christian Garcia, Councilmember Joe Garcia, Deputy Mayor Martinez, and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright, prosperous future. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Ready, begin.
Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A quick roll call. Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Present.
Councilmember Christian Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Garcia.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
Present.
And I, Mayor White, am here. Do we have a report on closed session tonight?
No public report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. How about non-agenda public comments?
Greg Oliver. Come up to the podium.
Good evening, council. My name is Greg Oliver. I'm here tonight representing Escondido neighbors for solutions. We had the privilege of working with the city council on some of the immigration concerns that the community had, the members of our group have. And while we all take that issue very seriously, we ended up, our best combined effort ended up as a letter from Escondido to the state, basically telling them to obey the law, which felt fairly performative. And I'm not complaining. I'm just stating it the way I see it. Which leads me to my next point. The immigration issue is very serious and is growing worse as we move along. I've been a bit distracted with things since July in studying the impact or the proposed impact of the OBBA. And what we see is that in 2031, the taxes on people that are, and these are nationwide, I'll tie it into Escondido before I finish. The taxes on people that make $15,000 or less are going to raise 74.3%. The taxes on people that make between 15K and 30,000 are going to raise 20.6%. And I thought, well, that's, those are pretty low wages. I don't know how many people in the country that is. It's 36% of the tax returns that are received by the IRS are 30,000 and below. It's impossible for me to believe that that's not going to impact Escondido. Things are going to get worse. Foreclosures and all the things that you imagine when people can't afford things anymore are going to go. Plus, 11, between 18 and 11 million people are projected to lose health insurance. And that means medical bills will be left unpaid. And California is one of the 38 states with filial responsibilities, which means if a medical bill goes unpaid, the family of the person who incurred the medical bill is responsible for it. So that's where it spreads out into the community with more people having huge problems associated with medical bills. And I hope you're ready for that kind of, to take action on those kinds of problems. I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Myself?
Oh, no, okay.
Did anyone else want to speak on agenda items? Anyone else? All right. No more public comments on this side.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Tonight, items one through four are on consent. And unless there's any objection, I'll move to approve items one through four as the consent calendar. Advance for a second.
For a second.
Motion. Second.
Please vote.
Voting is open. Motion approved. Five is here.
All right. On to current business. Number five is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Progress Report. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Schenick, and I am your Director of Economic Development. And I'm joined with my colleague Pedro.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Pedro Gardeles, Management Analyst to Economic Development.
And this evening, we'll be reviewing the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy update. So in this presentation, we will review what the SEDS is, show the progress to date, discuss next steps, and hear your feedback on where we are. So in 2023, City Council adopted a five-year comprehensive economic development strategy. And we will review the 42 initiatives that were a part of that citywide strategy and the progress we've made. So why is it a good time for a progress report? First of all, we're about halfway through this five-year period. So it's a good time to check in and see how we're doing against our goals. Also, the city of Escondido citizens passed Measure I, offering additional sales tax funding to invest in the city and future revenue generating opportunities. In addition to that, Development Services, the department within the city that handles building permits, permitting with the planning department, and also business license. Those departments have been going major software updates and process improvement updates, which greatly impacts how our businesses are able to do business within the city. Those processes are becoming more efficient, and it's becoming faster for businesses to open here. And then Economic Development became its own department, previously under the City Managers Department. And also, it now includes public art. So as a quick review, Economic Development is the creation of wealth from which community benefits are realized. That happens through job creation and upskilling individuals who are in our city so that they can get the jobs that they want, to obtain the wages that they would like. Our team is focused on business attraction, retention, and expansion. And our city serves over 10,000 businesses that are permitted to operate in the city. So in addition to Economic Development, we oversee business licensing, short-term rental licensing, and the real property portfolio, as well as public art. So what is a comprehensive economic development strategy? It is a document that uses data and community feedback to create priorities over a five-year time period. This allows these priorities to be nimble and react more to market fluctuations than, say, a general plan or specific plans which are dictating land use. So we're really reacting to how businesses are performing and what they're seeing in the market. This document that we have was created through nine community meetings with 120 meeting participants and 130 online surveys. So the initial draft was reviewed in May of 2023 and the final version adopted by council on June 7th. In this report, in this document, there were four fundamentals identified that can really be used to improve the economy for the city of Escondido. First is to balance population growth rates. In the initial data we saw, we were starting to lose young working families, ages 20 to 40. And also, we saw people under the age of five were not growing as a population group in our city, signaling that we needed to work to figure out how to attract that demographic to the city. Fundamental two, create more economic opportunities. That happens through job growth and also workforce training opportunities. Three, actively maximize the value of land. So because our city is fairly built out, there's not a lot of land left for development. Sometimes there's land annexed into the city. But the priority there is to make sure that land is being used for high-wage jobs or for housing to improve these fundamentals. And then the last fundamental is to lead intentional place making and marketing. And that really came out of our community meetings where people said they wanted the city to be able to do that. And we're seeing progress toward that through the city's branding initiatives and also through capital improvement projects that are being completed, such as the Grand Avenue Vision Project downtown and the Creek Trail Improvements, among others. So to go into detail on how to reach those fundamentals, there's four thematic areas that have key work assignments attached to them, which is what we'll be reviewing today. So the first thematic area is to streamline industry targeting. The industries that we've been focused on the last couple of years and that we're going to focus on for the next couple of years are agriculture and ag tech, clean tech, and tourism. The second is promoting technology entrepreneurship in early-stage fabrication companies. This is where we're looking to make sure early entrepreneurs come to Escondido. They can extend their financial runway if they're in Escondido compared to being located in other cities that have higher rents. And then the third area is to create a downtown destination district. So as I mentioned, there's initiatives associated with each of those thematic areas. There were 42 listed in the plan. So 52% of those are either complete or in progress. So now I'll hand it over to my colleague Pedro, who will talk through each of those key thematic areas and where we are for each individual area and some examples.
Thank you, Jennifer. So I'll dive into the thematic area for industry targeting. Of this specific thematic area, there were 18 specific industry targeting initiatives. Of those 18, 50% are in progress or complete, and the remaining 50% are not yet started yet. Some of the initiatives that we want to highlight for you are listed right here. So the first being a site preparation for a boutique hotel. So through this initiative, staff has utilized the data that we have gathered from a hotel feasibility study to help us market the city as a viable location for a new hotel. The next initiative that I'd like to highlight is the development of a unique brand identity for our agriculture initiative. So this is where the Escondido AgX brand was born. And this initiative is meant to support agriculture technology industries and to support local farmers and food systems. And the last initiative that I will highlight through this thematic area is the initiative to continue to explore the AgTech incubator. And our team has done this through solidifying regional partnerships with entities such as the University of California Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, as well as CSU San Marcos. Moving on to the next thematic area for entrepreneurship and commercialization initiatives. There are 14 initiatives that we have listed. And of these 14, 64% are complete or in progress. The remaining 36% are not yet started. And the initiatives that we'd like to highlight for you today, the first being the study of converting 455 North Quince into an AgTech hub. So we have brought over the Escondido AgX Innovation Hub's feasibility study to the city council for your recommendation and for approval. And that has led to the lease 455 North Quince with entity the buying to really kickstart that Escondido AgX initiative. And the second is to partner with key regional nonprofits to encourage entrepreneurship and innovation. So we have done this by partnering with local nonprofits such as Connect and the San Diego EDC. And these nonprofits help support and uplift entrepreneurs and new businesses. And really, this puts us in front of a really large audience and really puts Escondido on the map. And the last initiative I'd like to highlight for this area is mentoring services for early-stage entrepreneurs. And we're currently exploring partnerships with local small business support entities so that we can best support small businesses here in Escondido. And wrapping up with the last thematic area, which is to create a destination district. Through this initiative, we have 10 different initiatives for this thematic area. 40% are either complete or in progress, and the remaining 60% are not yet started. The initiatives that we'd like to highlight for you today is the first being implementing a property benefit improvement district. So this is done in collaboration with downtown business owners to establish what is known as a P-Bid to help support and market the historic downtown Escondido. The second being conducting a real property analysis of city properties. And really, what this initiative aims to do is to evaluate the city's real property portfolio and recommend updates to optimize asset management and ensure that any of those outcomes are within the city's best interest. And the last initiative I'd like to highlight here is the development of a comprehensive active transportation strategy. So really, this just looks like our department supporting the development, a citywide plan to expand and enhance mobility options that promote connectivity, safety, and accessibility for all users. So of course, all of our work doesn't just end with a comprehensive economic development strategy. There are also some policy updates that we'd like to highlight for council today. So the first policy is the short-term rental pilot program. So this was approved and adopted by city council on December 4th, 2024, with the goal of creating really clear guidelines for short-term rentals in Escondido, which were not in place before. And the goal of that was to preserve long-term housing options for residents here in the city and creating a pathway to collect transient occupancy tax. The second policy accomplishment we'd like to highlight is the introduction of the commercial vacancy ordinance. So the first reading of the commercial vacancy ordinance was introduced to council on October 23rd, 2024. And this, of course, was aimed at addressing commercial storefront vacancies citywide. Now, the goal of this initiative was to encourage positive commercial activity to active business centers and address blight. And the second reading and possible adoption of this program will be scheduled for a later date. And to wrap it up, I would like to highlight some of the upcoming policies that our department will take on over the next fiscal year. First being street vending. Really, the aim here is to develop rules and guidelines that ensure public health and safety while creating opportunities and a pathway for emerging food entrepreneurs. So we really want to establish that program and make clear the guidelines for street vending. Similarly, for food trucks. The department would like to update and establish clear streamlined food truck regulations that encourage appropriate uses while also supporting local business activities.
Can I ask a question? I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think on this list at one point was parklets. Is that no longer part of this?
That is correct.
And part of that is we're hiring a Disney Development Services Director right now.
Okay.
That is a program that would more appropriately live there, but we'll collaborate closely with that.
And just to remind everyone, we're also in the process of hiring, for the first time in a long time, a discreet parks planner. That position is being, I believe, the position is actually should be posted pretty soon. But yeah, that's a more appropriate location.
Okay.
Is in Development Services.
Thank you for the question, Mayor. Another policy that we would like to tackle is incentive for new businesses. And we will make sure is that we will design programs that attract and support businesses that align with the SEDS that we went over today for those specific priority industries which foster sustainable economic growth. And wrapping it up with a business license tax structure study. So we will undergo, try to conduct a comprehensive review of the city's business license tax structure and really comparing that to other models and best practices used by neighboring jurisdictions. And at the end, the goal would be to study, for that study would be to provide recommendations to modernize and improve the city's current framework, ensuring it remains fair, competitive, and aligned with regional standards. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Jennifer.
Thank you, Pedro. So the goal of this information is to really see how it affects the numbers. We can affect some of this locally with our policies and programs. A lot of it does depend on macroeconomic factors. But we are seeing a positive trend in some of the key numbers associated with our local economy. The residential permit units per year are increasing, and our population has increased a little bit. It took a little dip last year, but this year, the census data is reporting an increase. And the educational attainment for bachelor's degree or higher has increased pretty significantly over the last couple of years, and as well as the median income has also increased.
That bottom one's pretty phenomenal.
Mm-hmm. So we'll continue to report on these numbers.
Especially that the population growth has been so small. You know, that is something to look at.
So that concludes our presentation. We would appreciate your feedback on any of the items we presented on or any questions that you might have.
Awesome. Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this side?
And then signed up so far, does anyone want to speak on this particular item? Not a three? Would you like to? You can come forward, I'll get a time.
I can just, I can see that this is wonderful. But how are we trying to help us on this, the residents that live here, to keep them here, not to move somewhere else? So just...
I have a question about the P-Bid. So where are we at in that process? That's one that keeps coming to my attention, especially when I'm downtown. So where are we at in that process?
Yeah. So a consultant has been retained. Through the consultant, we have identified the geographic boundary that would be the district. Letters have been prepared to be sent to each of those property owners. And Pedro, have they been sent yet or not yet, the letters?
The first letter has been sent.
You said the first. So how many letters?
First letter.
Is there, I'm assuming a series of letter trying to get their attention?
Correct.
Okay.
Notifying them, this is, so there's, I mean, I will double-check if it's two or three letters that are then sent out to the property owners to say, this is the plan. This is how much money you would be paying into the district. And then it will come to city council for consideration once we have the data on how much money the city would pay into the district as well as a property owner in the downtown area.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
I'll also add to that, Jennifer. There will be an Economic Development Subcommittee. It would be the P-Bid item in early November.
Oh, okay.
It's scheduled for November 11th.
Great. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yes. Thank you for the presentation. Really exciting things to see on this list. I don't sit on the committee, so I don't, I'm seeing some of this stuff for the first time. My question is on the street vendor and the food truck items. So those are items that I, you know, have wanted to work on since the beginning of my, you know, tenure on this council. And I would love, I'm just kind of flagging it for early, that I would love really robust engagement opportunities because I know lots of small businesses that have been asking for that. And so if, I would love for us to be able to have a discussion at the council and maybe go back to a committee meeting so that we can chime in early on that conversation and also know when the meetings are going to be held, like listening sessions with the stakeholders. Because I would like to alert the food truck owners and the food entrepreneurs that this meeting is happening because they've been asking for years on this. And for their input to get considered before anything's drafted. So if you could let me know, that would be wonderful. And then again, it would be nice to chime in before a final draft is presented to council. Since I'm not on the committee. And I would really much like to be a part of that. I don't have any questions on the P-Bid. It looks like that's in process. I would like to also know specifically, you know, if we go back to that slide, it talks about the two things that we want to attract, which is high wage, you know, high-earning jobs and housing. I do think that, I know like the high school program that we have now is aiming to address like some of this work, right? The promise? The high school promise, is that what it's called? The one at Escondido High?
Oh, you're talking about Project Next?
Project Next, yes.
I think you're mixing that with the Palomar Promise?
Yeah.
Probably. In this, yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, so the Project Next, I know that's doing some work, right? Introducing them to workforce development and things like that. But just kind of going with what was commented on. It would, I do know a lot of opportunity youth, so youth that are out of high school. So there's a lot of youth that I know, especially in my district, that are not going to college. They're going straight into the workforce, and they're not making a lot of money, right? So they're making like just above minimum wage. And a lot of them just don't want to go to college. They want to enter the workforce, or they have to because they have to support their families, because rents are so high. So do we have connection to any local programs aside, you know, in addition to Project Next, which, if you're in high school, that works for you. But that group that graduates, like the 18 to 24-year-olds that are still very young adults, they can't afford even rent their own apartment, they're still living with their parents. What are we kind of doing for them to help them get those, you know, migrate into those higher-paying jobs? Because we could attract talent from other communities, right? That already have these high advanced degrees. But we really have a huge population in our own city that really does need to make more money. And I'm sure that they would be open to learning the trades or any other kind of STEM program. Is there anything that we have for our young people in Escondido who already live here and, you know, don't have college degrees?
Yes. Workforce development is a really wide range of opportunities for a variety of skill sets so that the people here can find the training they want to get the jobs that they want. So a really strong partner for us is the San Diego Workforce Partnership. They recently hired a new executive director that we've been able to get to know. And we're actually working in collaboration with them to do a career fair in the spring, specifically around agriculture and ag tech. And at that career fair, the goal is to have a wide variety of employers and training opportunities for people who want to work with their hands in a field or program in the field, Internet of Things technologies, or drones, or water sensors, all the way to other irrigation and technology systems, including the UC San Diego Supercomputing Lab and Salk Institute. So we'll have a wide variety of employers represented and also training agencies represented at that event. But the San Diego Workforce Partnership is one of our strongest partners for advancing those workforce opportunities for our youth.
Yes, I did hear about the executive director. I briefly met her. It would be also great to have like tabling events, and I can share that with her, like at the street fair, you know? So not just having a one-time career fair, right? But like having multiple career fairs on the weekend, you know, and different events where we know community is already there to help them, you know, promote those kind of programs. And I would love to also help facilitate that and promote that within the community. Thank you. All of my questions are done.
Sir?
Thank you. So as being the counterpart to the Economic Development Subcommittee, I have seen this a number of times, and so I don't have a lot of questions regarding that. But I would like to flag the question that was asked of how this applies to the families. I think that there's a lot in here that I think that can be taken out so we can show the community how this applies on a daily basis. One of them was exactly what we were talking about right here, the San Diego Economic Trade Workforce. So anyway, I wanted to make sure that I flagged that. Couple of the things that we've been working on together with the street vendors. I had the opportunity to make sure that we reached out to a number of stakeholders. In fact, we had people coming all the way from El Cajon and other, Chilavista and other areas because we made sure that the word went out. We used all the avenues that we had to make sure that that information was disseminated to come. And one of the things that I felt, and unfortunately, we haven't been able to finish the process, but the comments there were very, very positive from the stakeholders, the vendors themselves, speaking to us that they felt that this could be a model policy for the county. So I really look forward for us to be able to move forward with that, make sure that the stakeholders continue to be part of this and the community be informed, to be present and add to the discussion. In fact, the changes that were made there, some of the, our visitors that came from other jurisdictions, like, wow, it was almost like you guys knew what I was going to talk about because we had included those changes, or we had included those ideas before they even came to speak to it. So I was very excited to see the response that we got. Regarding the food trucks, I have spoken with a number of food truck owners, and they are waiting. And this is something that we've discussed at the Subcommittee, that, yeah, we really want to take this on because there's a necessity for that. But other than how this works into other aspects, the SEDS is something that's necessary. It's working, and it's helping us to... necessary, it's working and it's helping us to focus how we'd like our city to grow and impact our local communities. So that's more or less what I have at the moment that I'd like to share. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for this presentation. You know, I always tell people, whenever like there's something fun and exciting, look to these two because they're on the front line, they are doing awesome work. And whenever there's something that's bad and daunting, I say, look to this guy over here, so, because he'll handle it.
Now I understand the setup.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, don't worry.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. So, so thank you guys. Honestly, like joking aside, you guys do awesome work. And whenever there's a business issue, I always point to you two and you guys are just do such a great job at handling it, so thank you. So I had similar questions to my colleagues. The food truck, I think, is a really big opportunity that I think we are missing out on. I've had so many people talk about, you know, we really, for good reason, have capitalized on the opportunity on Grand Avenue. But East Valley Parkway has such a good opportunity, there's so much space there that I think we can really use for food truck opportunities, for events, especially at the community center. I just think that, you know, we had, we had National Night Out, I think it was two days, two years ago, it was a good space for it and I think that there's been a lot of restaurant owners that I know, business owners that I know on East Valley Parkway, that they just feel that the city's missing out on opportunity there. So many families, so many residents and just so much space there that I just really want to capitalize on that. So to, like, thank you for addressing the P-Bid, that's another thing that I had written down. And to piggyback off what my colleague said into what Ms. Wallace had mentioned as well regarding family retention, not just family retention, but I do want to look at business retention. So there are businesses that, you know, like every business, they have their ebbs and flows and some, some weeks, some months, some years are not good. And so I just want to see, what are we doing to help those businesses out? I know on an individual level, you guys have done a great job. Whenever I have business owners that call and they need some help, you guys are right on it. But on a larger level, in a general sense, in terms of policy, I want to see what we're doing right there too. So that's it for me, thank you guys.
Yes, I have mostly comments and just a couple of questions, but I just want to commend your team. I see you both out there in San Francisco, boots on the ground, talking to business people, talking to residents, and you're really delivering. And I like the percentage of seeing, you know, you're completed fifty-two percent. I think there was a sixty-something percent on some project and we're just at that halfway point and I just see the momentum going and people are getting excited. And then also, like you were saying, going out to other organizations, nonprofits and such, you've really activated a lot by having an advisor on the Chamber of Commerce. A lot of businesses are talking about it and they're really, they appreciate the leadership. And so there's, it seems to have opened up a lot more communication and trust with the city because of your actions, so I really appreciate that. Let's see, I did want to, I, I did like the comment, I can't remember her last name, but in terms of, because we had talked about attracting high wage paying jobs and the speaker made, or she made a public comment about, you know, what are we doing for those that aren't going to college? So we do need, I'm hoping that those high paying jobs that we attract could be welding, plumbing and seeing those type of, of skill sets, because you can't, you can't support a family. I'd pay my electrician a lot and the plumber a lot. So, you know, see what we can do to attract those types of businesses that can hire local and, but also on the other end of it, you're talking, you know, we're talking about entrepreneurship and the San Diego Workforce Partnership, you know, how can we get the word out to the community, those in our community that are interested in that? And then also, how can we bring in those organizations that, that will, that provide those skill sets for them? So I don't have the answer, but, you know, I think that'd be very important. But we really have to reach that demographic that isn't college bound, but they do have a desire. I used to do some consulting for an auto body shop and one of their body paint guys made three hundred thousand a year, no college, straight out of high school. So those are things that I'd also like to consider that would be included in the high wage paying jobs. Let's see, I love the tourism idea, I think that goes really good in what we're doing and the direction we're going and especially now with Sister Cities, that, you know, the things that are happening there, I really am excited about that. Let's see, there was a page I wanted to look at. Can we go to, oh, page sixteen, I mean slide sixteen, if you wouldn't mind. So on that, I just wanted to see... Okay, I just wanted to see the date, the timeframe within that, so it's, okay.
There's always a lag in data that we can receive, so we use the most recent data that we could, that we had access to.
Okay. And then also, I love what's happening on Grand Avenue and I agree, there's a lot of potential at East Valley Parkway, but don't forget folks, there's a lot happening at the mall too, okay? So let's, let's get some businesses there as well. Thank you, that was great. I appreciate you.
And just for the audience, this is kind of just a snapshot, you can view the entire economic development strategy on the city's website, correct? Under Economic Development?
Yes.
And it is much longer than just a handful of slides. So feel free to check that out anytime, but thank you. Is there anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, kudos to, is it Gillian, Gillian? Oh, somebody that works, that works with...
To me?
Yes, a lot of people are saying that she, she doesn't wait for them to call, she's checking in. So I think the changes that you've made in that work culture and it's really made an impact and it's very appreciated.
Yeah, she's in community services, working on special events.
Oh, okay. So kudos, I'll have to write something. Thank you, man.
And we just started, we're going to take a five-minute break or less.
Or less.
Four and a half.
Are you going to the, is it San Diego D V?
Sure. I may be a little late, but yeah, I have a few...
Richard, I was hoping to have a chat with you, because I would be there down, calling you on Friday. For, yeah. So I would be thirty-one, I can't... I don't know. So I did, I guess, we were just talking conversations at the city, but we didn't, I was sorry. I just have that.
We always have a primary or secondary, but I think he's secondary.
And he can't make it.
No, but a lot of you, I think I missed two, I have some discovery after, but he's been into it, but I'll make sure.
Yeah, I'm available in case he's not.
All right.
It looks like you've got time.
I appreciate that.
I'm available in case he's not.
All right.
Jennifer, I want to talk to you about Rivian.
About what? Rivian? You mentioned you talked to them?
My brother-in-law works for Rivian. He was, he loves that.
So they, they need several, they just don't know where you're listed? Do you know somebody there or do you, so it's Matt and it's, and they, they're not connected?
Service station here.
Still looking for more and I thought, so I'll email tomorrow. It might be, I think Matt's going to have to... That'd be really good.
All of your third and seventh.
It's not just a service shop, but it's...
It's like they have like their tour homes wherever.
Yeah. Did you say Jillian? The gal from, the gal from Medellin? Yeah, Pat Martinez, Robert Wilson. I'll let them know, they'll be really happy.
That's perfect. She's doing a great job.
It looks like they're coming.
Yeah, yeah. We're working on it.
All right, we'll reconvene this meeting and move on to item six because the community pressed for financial support for festival Wahaque Vive, Viva La Cumbia.
That wasn't too bad, actually. So my name is Jennifer Schenning, Director of Economic Development, and I'm presenting a few slides on this request and this is coming from the Economic Development Subcommittee. So we'll be reviewing the event, the funding requests from the community organizations, recommended action, and there will also be a presentation from the event organizers. So in today's presentation, we'll review the financial support requests from Organizations Two Streams and Wahaque Vive for a community event. So as I mentioned, we'll review the event, the request, highlight engagement and feedback opportunities, and then council will have the opportunity to consider taking action on making a financial contribution. So the city received a request for financial support from event organizers Two Streams and Wahaque Vive, and that's in your council packet. And that, that proposal was presented to the Economic Development Subcommittee on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The Subcommittee voted to bring this event forward to the complete city council for funding consideration in the amount of forty thousand dollars. So the event is scheduled to take place March twenty-first through twenty-second, twenty twenty-six. The location is Kit Carson Park Amphitheater and it's a two days, two days of food, dance and music performances and a market. The request from the organization is forty thousand dollars. So this would be twenty-three thousand dollars allocated from the Sister Cities budget and additional seventeen thousand to be added from two of the city sisters' budget for the remaining amount, in-kind support for free use of space permitting key waivers and the city to cover cost of utilities. Also a request for permit coordination and site access, communication amplification and business, community and business engagement support. So the Economic Development Subcommittee recommends that the city council approve the resolution authorizing the financial support up to forty thousand dollars for the event and the ability for the city manager and city attorney to complete the necessary budget adjustments and contracts relevant to the event. At this time, I will invite up Renee from Two Streams to present slides to give you more information about the event.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, you can sit up here with me, Renee, and pull up your PowerPoint.
Thank you.
Of course.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Renee Reynosso, I'm the Director of Two Streams Live, our parent company is Two Streams, LLC. We manage over, the music for over twenty thousand artists worldwide on different digital platforms. We upload their music at digital platforms, we collect their royalties and we always, you know, give them quite a good sum amount of money every month and then we take the percentage. And that's how we are, have the relations with the artists that we do, so.
Fancy slides here.
Oh, perfect. We're excited to, to bring Wahaque Vive and Viva La Cumbia to the City of Escondido, a festival that celebrates Latin art, music, theater, food, community spirit while giving a new life to a beautiful Kit Carson Park Amphitheater in, in Escondido, which we think is an incredible gem, gem that, that needs to be reintroduced. So we, this is the layout, this is what we have planned out and as you can see, community partners booths, we're talking about career booths and, and other community partners that could participate at no cost. So if we have any initiative, community initiatives, that blue section that, right there, that's for them. We talked about food trucks and food vendors. Well, we have a great opportunity here in that red section, food court stands and let's introduce some food carts and invite them from all over the city unless we have them here already. We have a Kit Zone and we have other vendor sponsors in the back area, which you can't really see. We also have a community stage, EMTs, and we hope to have and hire some of Escondido's finest to, you know, take care of security as well. So Viva La Cumbia. We've done this event at various venues throughout the country. We did one in Anaheim, we've done one at SDCCU Stadium here in San Diego. Fortunately, we get to do these in big venues and big amphitheaters. We see an opportunity here in Escondido. There's a great opportunity here in Escondido, but we're businessmen and sometimes it's hard to take a big venue or a big, a big event and, and put it into a smaller venue. You're kind of, you're kind of losing opportunity and perhaps making less money. So when we saw that the city was interested in partnering and supporting our event, well, it's sometimes it's easier to, to do these type of events when there's money and support from the city, you know? It makes it easier to swallow, if you would. But, so, we're excited. Cumbia is a joyful rhythm and contagious energy. It's a heartbeat of Latin celebration. So if you've ever been to a quinceañera, a wedding or a backyard barbecue, chances are you probably danced to this music. So now we have the opportunity to bring that same spirit here to the City of Escondido and Kit Carson Park. So that's exciting for us. This is one of our events that we did at SDCCU Stadium. We had close to sixty-five, seven thousand people. It's a great event. It's a great event and it drives traffic from all over the county. I'm talking about from San Ysidro to Oceanside, Escondido and beyond. It's a great way to introduce, reintroduce Kit Carson Park and it definitely is going to drive traffic to small business restaurants and hopefully hotels. So I think it's a great opportunity for the city to take advantage of. I think it's a great event for the community, something that they're going to be proud of. And we are, this is Wahaque Vive. Unfortunately, Dr. Machado is not here, she's in Italy and she had planned this trip, this business trip before, before we knew we were going to present to, but she did send along some slides. I know from what I know, this is a great theatrical event with, includes over eighty performers, eighty performers. They've done really well in other cities and hopefully they'll do just as good here. They've done really well in other cities, and hopefully they'll do just as good here. Two Stream Live is proud to invest our own resources and take the first steps in making this possible. The financial support we're requesting only starts to cover a portion of, of the artist's costs, but does not include production, marketing, catering, hospitality, hospitality, which we're also hoping to fund. You know, we're looking at, just for the artist, the production, the marketing, we're looking at about sixty-five thousand dollars to put on this event. And, and we're risk takers, and we are businessmen, and, and we know that this is just the start. So we're willing to invest in the city, and we love to see when cities believe in us and invest in us as well. So that's why we're, we're looking for support. But we're also looking for partners. So if the city would be interested in doing a revenue share in which whatever money they support us or fund us went with, we could go ahead and partner up and, you know, and, and give some money back, or perhaps all, if not more of the money that you funded us with to, to start this whole project. So we're looking for partners. We partner with cities, we partner with other promoters. One of our biggest supporters and partners nationwide is Nederlander, and I know some of you are familiar with that company, they put on events all over the country. Anyway, these are some great pictures. We'll have food, cultural entertainment, and Maleflo Crorico. We're hoping this can be the, the start of the beginning of a long-term relationship and partnership with the City of Escondido that'll continue and that will bring world-class entertainment, community pride, and economic growth to Kit Carson Park and beyond. I think we all have the same vision. I know when, when I came back to Escondido and saw Grand Avenue and what's going on here, and when I was introduced to Kit Carson Park by a couple of members of, of the people that are sitting here today, and Jennifer, you're doing great job, by the way. So much so that we're looking at carpet on Grand Avenue, you could have done another story. We see opportunity. We see tons of opportunity. We're not afraid to invest. And, but we are looking for support. We want to know that the city is willing to partner with us and that believes, and that believes in our vision, which I'm sure you all do, from what I've heard in your action plan, I believe, I know you do. Yeah, so we're looking for support, and we're hoping we can get, we're asking for forty thousand in-kind support and venue utilities permits, assisting with approval and communications and collaboration with community and local partners. I mean, that's self-explanatory. That's what we're about. We're, we're looking to do more in this city. We want to bring more festivals. I have the privilege to be part of the Grand Avenue Ball Festival, which, congratulations for all of you involved, huge success. We want to bring more of that to the city. And if we can do that with or without your support, we're cool with it. We, we want to be part of this community, we want to be a part of this, this growth and excitement that's going on in, on Grand, on Valley Parkway, in the whole city, and I hope I can be a part of doing that for Kit Carson Park today and in the future as well. Thank you so much for your time.
We'll go to public comments first, and I'll open it up for discussion.
If you want, you can come up here. Yes, please.
I have three questions only for the opponents. Hi, I'm Francisca Martino Gemignano, I'm a sapote. I've been living in Escondido, well, in San Marcos, but I've been working my whole twenty years in Escondido. I love Escondido, I work for the school district. And I have these questions because it caught my attention that this event, I'm asking how it will represent me as a sapote. You know, because you're talking about eighty percent, and it sounds amazing, and it sounds like Escondido will get, the City of Escondido will get benefits from it, but as a Oaxaqueña, as a sapote and indigenous, how will it represent me? How will benefit me? You are talking about internships and educational opportunities, which I really love, because my whole life, I, you know, my twenty-five years here, I spent in seeking for money for completing my careers, and never have opportunities like pre-money or something like that. So I would like to know what kind of internships and who will benefit from those. Also, my last question is eight percent performance. I am a dancer, and I have a group of dancers that we only do Oaxaqueña music culture, because we, you know, I'm a superb, but I'm American too, so I want to share it. But I never had the opportunity to share it because I never got the money, I never got on stage to do it, I only do it locally with people that are sapote by me. So I would like to know how it will, you know, represent me, benefit me as a sapote in, in California, in Escondido especially.
Well, we can't, we can't answer those questions, though. Right in a second.
But after.
Yeah.
En español, I'm so sorry. My inglés is delito. Referente a lo que está comentando la compañera, este, voy a hablar del Oaxaca. El impacto que ha tenido. Somos ciudades hermanas, me tocó ir por las ciudades de Oaxaca. Estuve en Oaxaca tratando con diferentes personas, las estuve hablando con ellos. Tenemos este varios de la ciudad de Huelva. Este, el impacto que va a tener y el beneficio no es directamente a nosotros como comunidad, sino está teniendo impacto con las comunidades porque vienen artesanos, vienen personas que son empresarias, que vienen, quieren traer. Si nosotros, yo como mexicana, no expandimos eso a otras ciudades, pues realmente el mezcal va a quedar solamente ahí en Oaxaca. Si también la, si la, la artesanía va a quedar más ahí. Yo pienso que como latinos tenemos derecho a recibir lo bello que es Oaxaca. Yo comprendo muchísimo su cultura y estoy aprendiendo de ella. A mí me gustaría que usted como, por ejemplo, ahorita fueran parte del proyecto, porque esa es la idea, todavía no está como aprobándose. Yo no sé nada, yo le voy a decir, hablar por mí. Como directora de grupo, este, la semana pasada tuve una banda donde yo no soy oaxaqueña, pero hice lo posible para que veinticinco niños estuvieran de Oaxaca, aquí representando a la ciudad, representando Oaxaca fue algo muy emotivo. Yo me sentí muy halagada de sentir gente de Oaxaca aquí, y podemos tuvir, tener esa, esa unión como mexicanos y latinos, y aparte respetando completamente la cultura oaxaqueña. ¿Qué se quiere traer a esto y por qué estoy aquí? Yo les voy a, les voy a explicar. Estoy aquí porque Oaxaca es, siento que es un impacto, no logrando con nada, simplemente respetando y haciendo que nuestros niños puedan entender la cultura de diferentes, diferentes estados. Y uno de ellos que tiene tanta cultura y riqueza en Oaxaca es que podamos tener este tipo de eventos y que Oaxaca pueda hacer. A mí me encantaría que pudiéramos trabajar, no tenía el gusto de conocerla, pero de conocer más de lo que usted sabe, poder unirnos y poder que aquí en Escondido, tengo veinticinco años, y este tipo de proyectos atraen y hacen que la gente podamos confiar en lo que ustedes están haciendo. Porque si nosotros no nos sentimos por X persona que sea diferente cultura, esa conexión que estamos tratando de llevar a cabo, esto va a quedar ahí. Pienso que todos tenemos un poquito de derecho de poder cada quien tener su propio espacio de eso, y a mí me encantaría que Oaxaca fuera. Yo he estado con diferentes personas de allá, y me encanta su cultura como mexicana y como residente de aquí. A mí me encanta, porque hay mucha comunidad de Oaxaca, y lo que queremos es que Oaxaca viva, se viva aquí en Escondido, con sus tradiciones, con todas las tradiciones que tienen, acercándonos, y más que nada teniendo ese trato directo hacia las personas, y pues ahora sí que dándole a notar que pues somos fuertes y que podemos con, con eso aquí en nuestra comunidad, y pues yo la verdad, me encanta esto, y pues que Oaxaca siga y que las demás culturas al igual que Étta lo puedan seguir adelante. Y este proyecto es un proyecto como directora, hi, no. Three minutes, you know more.
Any else, would anyone else like to speak on the side? I think you still have some. Great. No further than comments.
Okay.
They're wondering about the translation.
Okay. So after the Subcommittee, some other concerns were brought to my attention that I wanted to share at this point, and I shared this with Renee before the meeting. You know, in the last retreat that we had, we had said we're not going to put money towards events at this time, and I think in the spirit of fairness, we should stick to that as we, I think all of us have organizations coming to us requesting money. My suggestion would be to consider using the remaining funds in the Sister Cities budget, as this is exactly what it was set aside for. And then, I guess, putting that towards the staff costs and whatever else, but possibly even sitting down with Renee outside of this meeting and refining this just a little bit more, and then bringing back a refined proposal in the next meeting. So those are my comments.
I, I share those concerns. You actually took it right out of my mouth. Obviously, I have other questions, concerns, but Renee, thank you, by the way. This is awesome, and I, I want to, I, I would love to see this happen. But your concerns may or may be the exact same as I had written down. And I think we can make it happen. We just had to see how we could. It was in this exact room with, I think, pretty much the exact same group, that we said we're not going to use this money from general funds for special events, but we have a pot of money from the, from the Sister Cities. So, I, let's figure out how to make it happen. It just can't be from the general funds. So I agree with, with the motion that the mayor made, and I'll second it.
It was an emotion, it was just a recommendation while I listened to my colleagues.
Oh, okay.
So, so can I ask a clarifying question? Because your next item is actually a resolution around MFI. And the conversation was not to spend MFI, and that's why I'm bringing back the resolution, so it's clear and clean. I just, I'm, I, at the end of this, if you're interested in pursuing it, I kind of need to know what the parameters are and where there is willingness to funding and what the thresholds of those fund. That's something, something I'm going to need some clear direction if we're going to sit down and have a negotiation with a party. I need some clarity in that space. So I'm just asking for that clarity, if that's the way this would proceed. I will remind council that the twenty-five thousand was a placeholder to roll over to this year. There was some actually discussion about was that the right amount at the budget meeting? I couldn't answer that question because at the time, there was nothing in front of us forward. So I will just say, I want to make it clear that the last conversation was about utilization of Measure I funds. You're going to visit that item for formal resolution, so I think it is timely to talk about that a little bit, because that is the next item on the agenda. But I, wherever this goes, I just need some clarity on what the parameters are that we're working with, because I, general fund is where we would typically be looking. I brought forward general fund as a structural, has a structural problem with it. That, that's all I'm looking for.
Would the parameter keep the twenty-three thousand remaining in the Sister Cities budget to distribute towards the event?
That, that, that is a parameter we can work with. I just, that's what I need, is clarity on what that parameter is.
Okay.
So I am, I am at fault for all of this. I, I'm at fault for all of this, because a, a long time ago, I had this crazy idea of having Sister Cities somewhere else. And some opportunities opened up with having two Sister Cities in Oaxaca. And we had the mayors from those cities arrive, and they were here, there were delegations, and we had an opportunity to chat, to get to know each other, and, and the initiative, the policy on the initiative was written. I was staffed in the way it's supposed to be staffed, and then it was brought to full committee, and we had an opportunity to be able to discuss it, and, and then decide if we wanted to, to approve this initiative of Sister Cities. We did. I was very excited that we did. We have one Sister City called San Jacinto de Amilpas in Oaxaca, and then we have another Sister City called Simatlán de Álvarez, also in Oaxaca. And I had the privilege to travel to those cities, and with the number of leaders from Escondido over there that, that went, in Maricela, that went on their, on their own expense, traveled there, and had the opportunity to be able to sign the agreements between these two cities. One of the, the dreams, as we were different people in the community and talking, was having some kind of a, of a fair, not feria, about Oaxaca and our culture in general, the Mexican culture in general. That's kind of how it was all born. Because of circumstances, things got complicated. The idea was already being discussed, and then there were discussions at council of policy development as to how we would fund these type of events. This was already a process. So it, it wasn't something that said, oh, wow, let's do it anyway. No, this was already a process, this was already being discussed, but we also have to, there's a time element involved that we have to think about. One of the things that, and that's why it's before us, because we are the body that has the opportunity and the authority to be able to make the decisions. I, I really wouldn't know where we could get funds other than from the general fund to be able to cover the seventeen thousand dollars remaining on the request. So there was also a question, and, and I'm sorry, I missed your name. What was your name?
Francisca Martino Gemignano.
Doña Francisca, thank you for coming today. And I was, I, I was so excited to hear what you were saying, because one of the things behind this is to create these opportunities and partnerships with our local community. But I can't say anything until I get approval. You know, I can't go into the community and say, oh, we're going to do this. As much as I can say right now is we're planning and we're hoping, and these are the dates, and we're choosing, and it's going to city council. And that's as far as I've gotten so far, right? So when we talk about that, yeah, absolutely. That is something that we're looking at. This is not something that we plan to do in, in a vacuum. This is something that we want the community to, to yell and scream and be excited and, and dance and, and do all these things that, that should be done. Unfortunately, as Renee mentioned, Dr. Machado, Margarita Machado, Professor of SDSU specializing in, in saving indigenous languages from Oaxaca, couldn't be with us. This, this agenda item kind of got moved a few times, so she was expecting next month, so that's why she wasn't able to be here today. Otherwise, she could speak a lot more, because she is, manages a global education, nonprofit. That's up to the mayor. That's, that's not up to me. Miss Doña Francisca raised her hand, I don't know if, that she would like to say something to the mayor.
We'll keep going with the council for right now.
Okay. So, and she would be much better at being able to answer those questions, as Oaxaca a few months ago was the first time I had the privilege to be able to go and to experience the incredible culture and words and, and. I don't drink, all right? You'll find this all funny. I don't drink, but it's very cultural in certain aspects that you get a drink and, and it's alcohol. And when they said, beer de piña, y ahora van a tomar, they're going to drink beer de piña. And this is on video, and you remember, I'm a church pastor, okay? So my eyes got big, and the mayor next to me looked at me and he said, oh, don't worry, it's, we made it non-alcoholic for you. We have two types of beers, one for men and one for women. The one that doesn't have alcohol is for women, that's the one that we're giving you. I said, okay, thank you, right? And sure enough, the video got to the church, and the pastor, what were you doing? I said, don't worry, it was, it was non-alcoholic, right? But it's the beauty of the culture to be able to work together. So we are definitely planning on doing that, if my colleagues will see light in approving this. So when it comes to why we did this, well, we did it because not only the Sister Initiatives, Sister Cities Initiatives was about creating exchanges, art, culture, economic development, art tourism. Art, culture, economic development, art tourism were, were some of the main issues, some of the main areas that we wanted to work on. Well, we believe that this is definitely one of those opportunities to be able to do that. Together with, and the Feria de la Cumbia and Oaxaca Vive were, were separate events. And as I was discussing with Renee of Two Streams Live, we, we thought about, well, why don't we discuss with Oaxaca Vive and see if we could partner and strengthen the, the opportunity? So, I brought them together. They discussed it and they realized that we could do, we can accomplish a lot more together than, than separately. Rather than be in competition, come together. And that's how that was born, to come together. And now it's become one event over the weekend rather than two separate events over that same weekend. So, that gave us an opportunity to be able to see how necessary and how important it would be to have an event like this at the amphitheater, to begin to provide an opportunity for the amphitheater to be utilized. It's an underutilized asset in the city. And we have groups such as Two Streams Live that want to work there and want to invest in this. And they really want to be part of the fabric of Escondido. So, activation, as we talked about, SEDS, it's talking, this is activation about, of our, our land. To create economic opportunities, it's there. To create opportunities for education, it's there. Because what do I want, what did I learn? I learned that las posideras del pueblo are not voted, nor are they shits. It's the community that allows them, that gives them that, that title. And I didn't know that. And I was like, "Well, what school did you go to?" And they just kind of looked at me, "And it doesn't have anything to do with the age either." I thought it would be all grandmas. Well, no, it's not grandmas. It's different ages. It's the, what the community takes. So, what comes together with this event is, I believe, something that is going to trascen- transcend, thank you, transcend, right? More than, than we are actually envisioning. So, I would request of my colleagues, a vote of support and approval. Why was, would I be in support of using $23,000 out of the sister cities? Because I think this is exactly what we wanted to. We, we were still lacking, when you asked those questions at our meeting, when we organized the, or when we set aside those funds. We, we were still right there. And now that we have a concrete opportunity, I would say we're investing some that we already have and we need $17,000 more to, to do that. But I believe that as we partner with these organizations, the revenue share, as we talk about the opportunities to come in, a few weeks, over the last couple of weeks, we've had a number of Oaxacan festivals. One in Oceanside and in the surrounding areas. And there are thousands and thousands of people. Why? Because there's a hunger for them. And Escondido is a place where we can see this and see it grow and the community, our local community, get involved. We're going to have feria all day long. So, there is going to be plenty of opportunity for all our local dancers, our local musicians to be able to participate and be in the middle of the, of this. That's the desire. So, we build this community to see it get to, or we still can't figure out exactly where it's at. So, my request is that we approve the extra $17,000 tonight and now provide an opportunity to be able to now begin to look into the local organizations. Begin to, because otherwise, what can I say? I, I, I have no authority without us making a decision to be able to say, "We're going to do this. We're going to invest." How can I invite somebody to say, "Well, you know, maybe, I hope so." I think it's appropriate that we, when I would speak or any one of us speaks, it's because we have authority to be able to do so. So, I would request from my colleagues, a vote for, a yes vote on, on this presentation.
Can I ask a question that I think might help with some clarification? The 25,000 that we set aside, that's on an annual basis. What is the timeframe? Is it, is it, is it a calendar year or is it...
Everything in the budget is be able to fiscal, will be on a fiscal.
So, this would fall within the first fiscal year? So, it wouldn't, we wouldn't have the 25,000 from the next year?
No, you, you, so every year, you adopt an annual budget, right? Typically, we do roll over allocations year to year, but within, that is still something you all have to approve, right? I think this year at the budget, there was already 25,000, so that number carried over into this fiscal year.
Okay.
Uh, I will say, part of, there was a discussion at council, a little bit about that number. What was impossible to forecast is need, right? You know, you, the number, that was the discussion, like, there was a brief discussion at council, "Should we expand that pot of money?" The decision at that time was not, because there was no basis to, to calculate out the budget. That was one of the, "What's the budget?" It's kind of difficult as a program evolves to sit there and say, "Where, what is it?", right? So, so I think last year was 25, this year it was 25. Next year, if we were to bring it back, it would be 25 unless council were to change the funding level.
Right. So, so how much is in the sister cities pot right now?
Right now, there's $23,000.
And by the time this event happens, there will still only be 23,000?
Yes.
That depends on what...
If we, if we...
Yeah, yeah. So, there, so there are no additional expenditures against the sister city budget. Forecast, I, again, based on what council decides to do tonight, there would still be 23,000 in that budget.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I think, I'm excited about Kit Carson Park, the amphitheater. You know, that's been something that's been on my heart for a long time. One of the things, as far as general fund, my concern is, and I'm glad we're talking about Measure I. So, the general fund, as far as any money that would be taken out of there for this, would partially be from Measure I funds we're already receiving.
No, there, there, there are no... So, again, I'm expecting, council, council was pretty clear on what their expectation about Measure I.
Right.
We're doing a, our next item is to do the formal resolution, so it takes some of the mystery. I'm going to preview that because we're about to go into the community, have budget conversations with the community. And I want to be clear and transparent with the community about council's intent on how it wants to spend the Measure I funds so that we can communicate clearly to everybody that these are things that Measure I can be spent on. These are things that council is saying Measure I will not be spent on.
Well...
And then, so as a general fund, this, that, it comes back to, there's general fund. You, there are structural issues with general fund long-term. We're trying to balance, you will be adding in additional general fund obligations during the course of this year, stuff that we have put on to temporary funding sources. Those will have to some degree be folded back into general fund obligations. So, right now, as it stands right now, we just did a mid-year budget. There are some unallocated funds that are still sitting that are general fund related. And that is most likely where the city manager would be looking. If there was money added, I'd be looking to that pot of money that you, that you did some spend expenditures from, but you didn't expense all the way down at last.
Well, I think so. I'm in agreement with the mayor. I mean, I think we really, you know, like to sit down and look at exactly what that would look like because this is important. But it's also important that I know and that the public knows that we're not going to deviate or have, give any perception that it's coming out of Measure I funds because that's not what was promised and what was on the ballot.
And I, and if I, just to clarify, I think what my colleague was saying is that whatever we use from the general fund, we move that to this. Well, that would have to be replaced by Measure I money. I mean, the money has to come from...
Well, that's why we're going to have...
These are unallocated.
These are, these are unallocated general fund dollars that you have, that we had a conversation last meeting about. We did not allocate all of those funds. So, there still is some general fund that is unallocated.
Right, yeah.
And so, and so that would not be rating, I want to make it clear just so, for this conversation, that would not be rating, that would not be looking to Measure I and be not rating additional pro-existing programs. So, so I just want to make it clear, we can come back at a future date and do that presentation about where those funds would be specifically moved in.
I like that.
So, I, I'm willing to come back at a future date. And we can, we can, we can identify where the fund is. But I want to make sure that's what council's intent is so that we can advance the conversation and have certainty. So, if that's what, again, tell me what you, what the next steps are and we can provide that information to the council.
And I think that was precisely what we were looking for with it. The concept is, if we approve this tonight, is to indicate to the city manager, "No Measure I funds", which is, we already know that's the case, right? And then we can say, "All right, we approve it. Now, come back in X amount of meetings and just show us where it came from so it is exactly what we stated that we wanted tonight. No Measure I funds, you know, from unallocated funds from the general fund so we're not taking out of another department of the concerns that may be, that have been shared tonight." And that way, it provides an opportunity to be able to plan because an event this size doesn't happen in, in a month or two months. This is, this is already at our doorsteps, March. So, once again, I would, you know, I think that it's appropriate that we put those clauses or ideas specifically on our vote, but that we vote tonight that, yes, this is, we'd like to do it. We direct the city manager to find the funds, but we find it in, under these circumstances.
And I just, I just, as, as far as what my colleague was saying, council member Christian Garcia, you know, if we're taking out of another fund and that fund's going to be backed still by Measure I funds, it feels kind of like, so it's not, we don't want the shell game.
Yeah.
You know what, please, please...
No, this is important. But, I mean, we want this, but we just want to make sure.
So, so, so...
Transparency to the community.
Can I let the deputy mayor speak for just a minute?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, can we go to that slide that has the breakdown of the request for the city? Yes, please, thank you. Perfect, yes. So, I have, I have a series of questions. So, Renee, thank you for coming. We met briefly at the El Dueto event. It was nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Um, thank you for your interest in our city and investing in our city. I think that's important. I appreciate that. So, are, are you an Escondido resident?
I'm not.
Okay. Are you of Oaxacan descent?
I'm not.
Okay. Do you know if the other woman, the, the diatropis, is she from, of Oaxacan descent?
No, but she is very familiar with the, with the culture in that community as well. She studied it and, as you heard from, from Garcia.
Yes, okay. Thank you so much. And then initially, I, so my colleague mentioned a little bit, like initially, you know, so yes, this, this 23,000, that was 25,000, but 2,000 apparently has been spent for travel to Oaxaca by my colleague. You know, I, just for some context of where I'm coming from, you know, I, I, I approved that with tons of questions and reservations because we didn't have a fully fleshed out sister city activities budget. It was kind of like we were going on like, "Let's just have this amount. We think it's the right amount." Well, I approved it because some of our local ballet frotico groups mentioned that they would be part of the sister cities initiative and that they would use the money for meetings and things like that. So, that money has not been used for those kind of purposes, to my knowledge. So, for me, you know, approving that, I approved that for a specific amount. And then seeing this proposal, it doesn't, I don't know if we're abandoning the sister cities or, but I, I don't see anywhere the three sister cities that are part of this event. Are, are they connected in some way, maybe it wasn't mentioned?
So, so they are, but I want you to understand, when, when we're doing this event, we're not just doing this and excluding the community. We want local community, ballet frotico, especialmente, the gente que está aquí, que apoya la comunidad. That, people that are here that are already support the community. We, we want to invite the local community. We want to invite local artists. We want to, there's a lot of people here that live in Escondido from Oaxaca. And so, we want to invite them to participate. We're not going to go look outside our cities. Yes, we are bringing performers from Oaxaca, but we're bringing them to the city where the Oaxacan, hey, our Kenyos already live. So, we are not, definitely not abandoning that idea or that project. We're just bringing it to Escondido where the people are and inviting and including the community who happens to be, the majority of them happen to be from Oaxaca to participate. So, I wanted to let you all know that, and especially you men, that we are definitely taking everyone into consideration here in Es, in Escondido. We want to invite local ballet frotico, people that can educate the community and those that aren't from Oaxaca, above your homeland, and, and, and what, what they bring to this community. So, I, I don't know if that answered your question, but, but...
I hear, yeah, I hear what you're saying. My specific question was, because we're using the pot of sister city money that was originally allocated for sister city activities, how is, what's the role of the sister cities specifically and which sister cities in this proposal? Because I didn't see their names mentioned.
Yeah. So, we, well, not we, because I had nothing to do with that. But Simatlante Alvarez is one of our sister cities. The majority of the performers are coming from Simatlante Alvarez, okay? In the original flyers and stuff, it talks about the Simatlante Alvarez, frotico and stuff. But it was an internal decision on, on Oaxaca Vive, Vivo Oaxaca, I'm sorry. They decided that they were going to just go with Oaxaca Vive dancers rather than the ballet frotico de Simatlante Alvarez. So, they decided that. But the majority of the, of performers coming, they're coming from one of our sister cities.
But, oh, yeah, but it's just not, so it's just, they're from this commu-, those communities, but through this other woman, right? This other woman's company, the Oaxaca Vive one, the one that's not here. Is she the one doing that, like recruiting them?
She's, she, they're, they're producing the, she's producing the, the, the show, the, the event. Like her director of dance is from Simatlante Alvarez.
Okay.
All right. So, it's, it's all from, from one of our sister cities. So, specific to, to answer your question specifically, is there a relation?
It's one of ours, sure, it's with, with one of them, okay.
Absolutely.
And then deputy mayor, I wanted to tell you, when, when I was introduced to this project, we were brought along to, to help, to support. We figured that it would be, make a lot more sense to have two events share the production cost. And our team bring in bigger names, international names with our Viva la Cumbia event to create awareness for Kit Carson Park, for this event, to drive traffic and to use our partnerships in TV and radio. And knowing that that would help and it give it a little bit more exposure. So, I can talk to you all day long about Viva la Cumbia, but I know when I was presenting with this Oaxaca Vive and I saw what their plan and their goals were and to bring that culture to the, to the Escondido, to, to the home, or to bring their home country back to Escondido where a lot of people are from, Oaxaca, we fell in love with the idea and that's why we wanted to support it. Besides the fact that Kit Carson Park, and we fell in love with that, that whole project.
Yes, lots of potential in Kit Carson Park. So, okay, so, um, I think, so, so another thing that, that kind of comes to mind. So, I have been getting some people, residents, some of our Oaxacan residents have said, "Hey, which local Oaxacan organizations or Escondido residents are working on this?" Do you have names of people in Escondido that are working with that are of Oaxacan descent?
So, because this hasn't been approved and because we don't even know if this is going to happen yet, we haven't reached out. But we have partners in the community that are helping us with that. And are we going to do that? Just absolutely, of course, like I said.
So, um, I'm, so I'm not a fan of kind of this, like a rushed proposal. And then I, and my, I'm consistent in this. There was another thing, another proposal that kind of came very quickly for a high amount of money. That's not the usual thing that the city does, is spend, you know, give a lot of money to events, things like that. It's not something that we've, it's something we've done lately, but it hasn't been something we've done traditionally. I'm very rooted in community, so people reach out to me. And I'm a super, I'm a very grassroots elected official. So, for me, like, I understand the dynamics between different groups and like different arts and culture organizations. So, for me, like, I understand the dynamics between different groups and like different arts and culture organizations and you have to be very intentional with these kind of events because people have lots of questions, people get confused, feelings can get hurt, people can feel like their toes are being stepped. And there's all these like, it has its own politics and dynamics, right, which I'm sure you know. But we, as, you know, for myself, living in this community and working with this community, I'm aware of those dynamics. I'm also aware of different groups that use the Kit Carson amphitheater. And, so I've been reached out by different groups about like, hey, what's going on with this? And I, my, my hesitation is that this is kind of coming as like a proposal without having like requested a proposal from the community. So it's just kind of being brought to us, like we didn't give other groups the opportunity to maybe hope, you know, organize something or propose something, right? So, that's where I hesitate because I feel if we're going to give money to community groups, first of all, my priority would be to Escondido groups. That's just my philosophy. Because a lot of our groups have been operating with no support from the city, okay? And it makes it feel, I feel like we kind of pit, it pits us against each other because when we support a group that's new to us, you're new to me, Renee. I feel like you, you sound like a really cool guy. I'm sure you and I will, you know, mesh well and get along and probably work together in the future, but you're still new. And I have deep relationships in this community and deep trust with a lot of our Oaxacan community and our diverse communities. And I need to be able to say why this and not something else and, and why is, you know, where's the opportunity for them to be able to propose an event, right? So I'm kind of looking at it from like a bigger landscape than just, hey, the event sounds wonderful, I think it would be successful. I have no doubt you know what you're doing. I saw some of the names of the people you had on those flyers, I'm familiar with those acts. I've, I've seen some of, a lot of them perform. So I have no hesitation that you know how to bring people to a city. But again, overall, I'm going to be answering a lot of questions. I'm going to be put in a very difficult situation with community groups, with arts and culture organizations. And they're going to be coming to me and I'm going to be having to answer a lot of questions on a proposal that is very new to me because I'm not part of that committee. And I don't want people to feel like alienated or left out. I feel like this is a good conversation starter to maybe do some more intentional research within the community, like meeting with groups saying, hey, we have this idea, do I have your buy-in? What do you think? Let's join together. I feel like this proposal should already have Escondido people in it. I don't want to approve something and then be told, oh, we're going to engage them after. To me, I, I don't, I don't like that kind of outreach. It's, it's about, it's about building those relationships and being intentional first and getting the buy-in of the community so that they can be part of it. Not, hey, we got the proposal, we got the funding, and now we're going to do it. That's not how I like to operate. So, I'm going, I'm not, at this time, and again, it's not that I don't support what you're doing, I recommend like, you know, coming back in the future, doing that landscape analysis and research with the community, connect with Francisca, with Marisela, and start to come with a plan that's with them. There was a very successful event that I didn't get to go to, I really wanted to go, pero no pude, in Oceanside. That Oaxaca de Mis Amores. I had been hearing about that event for, for weeks. That was a community-led, super grassroots, even youth-led event, and it was so successful. And they had people from all over the county, all, because North County has a large Oaxacan community. They had people from all over North County participating in that.
We'll say, we'll say organize that, correct?
He was part of it, but he, you know, but the organizers actually lived in Oceanside. So it was residents of Oceanside that organized it for Oceanside. It was very well done and I feel that's a great approach to doing that kind of cultural organizing and entertainment. So, I would like to see something more like that's rooted in community. And for that reason, I'm going to say, I'm not going to support the current proposal as it stands. Also, the $40,000 doesn't even cover what our investment would be. In-kind support with free use of space permitting waivers, the utilities, permit coordination, city communication, all of that, all the staff time and all those in-kind support, that all translates to money. So we're not looking at $40,000, I would say we're well over the $50,000 mark. And you just quoted me $55,000, so that means we're being the, the majority financial investor in this and for something that hasn't been, that didn't kind of start from the community and isn't a process we opened up to others, I'm just not able to support how, you know, at this time.
And I appreciate every single, everything you said. And I would have no other way if I was in your seat, in your shoes, I really wouldn't. And I want you to understand, we're, we're not, it's not our practice, nor do we ever come to this city and say, hey, you know what, give me money and I'll do an event in your city. No, we don't operate like that. Like I said, we're businessmen, we could easily take this to another city and it may, it would be very turnkey to produce this event perhaps at a lesser risk, may at the same cost, but it would, financially it would be a lot more beneficial to us, so.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Would you support what I had mentioned earlier, using the remaining balance of the sister cities budget to come back with a more refined proposal? And that would be if our contribution is $23,000?
I would, and if that proposal included a proposal with community, that they're actually part of the proposal and they're in the, you know, budget line item, I would be open to, to exploring that. But at this, at this time, going beyond the $23,000, I would not be in favor of any additional monies beyond $23,000. And I would revisit, I would be open to revisiting and getting, hearing with a new proposal, but I would say, reach out to these groups now and incorporate them as part of the organizing committee.
So just to clarify what you're saying, while the $23,000 part of the line item should be including into a local Escondido group, you know, $2,000 is going to go, this is, right? To this organization for XYZ costumes, whatever.
Yeah, I want to see local groups, I want the budget, I want to know how much the local groups are going to get paid, right? And I want to make sure that our, our Oaxacan residents are part of this and that they have their buy-in. Obviously, like, there's not one that speaks to everybody, but there are leaders in our community that, that I want to feel like are part of this event, you know? Because you aren't of Oaxaca descent, and I, I'm just very sensitive to that. I'm very sensitive to like cultural, you know, things because I, it's just, it's very, it's very important. And it, and it does matter like who represents you and it does matter where you work. And Escondido has its own, Escondido is very special and we're very community here. We all know each other, right? So, it's just a different vibe.
And to that point, is that something that can be done in the time that we have?
So it does make things harder, but just so you know, we have been reaching out to community leaders and Marisela is one of them. We are talking about, we have a community stage.
But I didn't see her name on the proposal, right? So, I don't know that because it's not in the proposal. I need to go by what's in front of me, that's what I'm going in on.
And unfortunately, because it's not approved, I can't even start. I, I have commitment from, from certain artists because I have a relationship there. And I, and I can tell them, hey, save this date for me, man, save this date for me, please don't book it. I'm planning on something, I'll let you know if it's going to happen or not. We do have a community stage, I have to fill it, I'm going to fill it with community, that's the goal. There's no other plan other than that.
Yeah, but are you, would you be able to do it with just $23,000 if that was the case?
No, no, we're, we're going to, we're.
Because that's what I'm willing to, is the max.
So, so.
Because we already budgeted that.
Just, just so we're clear, Oaxaca Vive, and I think they're very, they're being very conservative asking for the money that they're asking.
I think so too, I think you're totally, I think that's an under.
Let, let me talk about Viva La Cumbia, that's a lot more money. And, and again, we're not in the habit of asking the city for money, we usually put it on and we risk it ourselves. We know we'll make it and in some cases we may not, maybe lose a little bit, but we made an impact. Or we created a relationship. Look, it's costing us a lot of money and to do it here in this city, again, there's a reason we're here. We see growth, we see opportunity, we see people that care about the community, we see an action plan, we want to be part of it. So, yeah, the $18,000, just starts, starts, I think I mentioned, that's barely the start of maybe deposits for certain groups, but it doesn't cover production, hospitality, travel, just a bunch of other stuff.
But, but Renee, so if we're proposing for us to come back at $23,000, which is what I'm hearing the majority of my colleagues say, is that even feasible? Can we even continue the conversation?
Look, when I was approached, I, I want to support this community, I want to be part of Kit Carson Park. So, if the $23,000 is going to be allocated to Oaxaca Vive because I think it's important, I think it's great for the community, I think it should be done. We're willing to take the risk and partner up, I have to talk to my partners, I have to talk to my partners and I have to present an idea, say, hey, guys, we have an opportunity, I think there's a way for us to support the community, to bring in artists, you know, we have to keep them working as well, we have relationships with, with them as well, to perhaps put our, our footprint here in this community and start making connections with the community, the city council and leaders. So is it a smart investment on our part? I think so, we have to do our own numbers as well. But like I said, it's, it's, it's workable sometimes. It's more workable sometimes when, when you have a starting point and you see that the city's willing to invest in you than you, you know, you invest into the city. So it was nice to see that the city was considering and I appreciate it. And I appreciate the time and, and everyone's time here, please, I know we're taking a lot of your time. So, it's nice to see when city is supportive and willing to invest in newcomers, but newcomers that have a pretty good reputation in the industry. Because like I said, and I, and I don't want to go nowhere else, I want to, I want to do things here. So, we can go back, you, you can talk about it and I'll do the same. Support Oaxaca Vive because I think that's a great, great, great event for Escondido. We were just trying to come along, support them, underwrite some of their costs and then create a relationship with them.
Was, is your event the Viva La Cumbia one?
Yes.
Oh, got it, okay.
But, but we are now one, I want you to understand.
I got you.
We were two separate, we were planning on doing Viva La Cumbia, we were probably going to do it at the sports arena in San Diego, but this opportunity.
Got it, I hear you.
Yeah, and so then we partner up because I thought I could help them underwrite some of their costs.
Yeah.
Those $23,000 is going to go a lot further if I get involved on Saturday to support their event, so, that's it.
So the direction is to explore a refined proposal using the remaining $23,000 in the sister cities budget?
With, I think with the caveat of including organizations.
Engaging local organizations.
Including them in the proposal, like, you know, what, what goes to them, right?
Do you need a motion for that or is it just a direction?
I, I want to make sure everybody's in agreement with that, so I want, I want to hear that that's.
Okay, that, that would be the motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
You can vote.
Voting is open. Mine's not. Oh, is it not refreshing? Do you want to do a voice vote? It's at the y, submit, one button, submit. There we go.
And then refresh.
Oh, sorry, I, I see it's a y, that's it.
Yes. Motion approved, I agree.
Okay, thank you everybody, thank you Renee.
Thank you, John, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a brief presentation for the next side of this room. All right, Honorable Mayor, Member City Council, Zach Beck, City Clerk, going to do a brief presentation regarding Measure I spending priorities. I'll turn it over to the city manager, with Lynn, to discuss any items the council has on the side. Presenting purpose, first is the request city council adopt resolution number 2025-142, which formally aligns the spending priorities for Measure I sales tax revenue with a priority specifically articulated in the official November 2024 ballot language for the Escondido community investment measure. Just for quick clarification for both the public and the council, here was the actual question in the ballot for the Escondido community investment measure. It said, quote, "To provide funding for essential services in Escondido such as providing public safety, addressing homelessness, improving streets, sidewalks, infrastructure, increase police, fire, and paramedic services, reducing traffic congestion, and maintaining parks, trails, and open space. Shall the Escondido community investment measure establishing a local one-cent sales tax providing approximately $28 million annually for 20 years be adopted for general government use with independent audit, citizen oversight, and all money staying in Escondido?" As you know, 61% voted yes, 38% voted no. Measure I priority areas are as follows. First, providing public safety, then addressing homelessness, improving streets, sidewalks, infrastructure, increasing police, fire, and paramedic services, reducing traffic congestion, and maintaining parks, trails, and open space. An important note is that revenue for general government use with independent audits, citizen oversight, and all money staying in Escondido. Measure I timeline, just for a review, approved in November during the 2024 election. In June of 2025, council adopted a budget that also allocated Measure I funds. In August of 2025, the citizens oversight committee was established. And then at the September 2025 council vision workshop, council provided direction to the city manager to align the priorities with Measure I spending in alignment with the ballot question. So why the resolution matters, it formally aligns spending with voter-approved priorities, establishes a policy framework for budget allocation, honors the mandate provided by the voters, provides clear guidance for staff and budget development, supports citizens oversight committee and its accountability role, and maintains consistency between voter expectations and expenditures. For clarification, Measure I is a general tax. This resolution establishes policy commitment, not legal restrictions on those funds. The implementation framework is as follows. City manager develops budget recommendations aligned with priorities. Budget recommendations presented to the council for approval. Standard budget development process applies. Citizens oversight committee reviews and monitors expenditures, not the budget preparation, but the expenditures afterwards. Regular public reporting on revenue collections and expenditures. Detailed financial records maintained and independent audit requirements are enforced and that is overseen by the citizens oversight committee. So the recommendation is to adopt resolution number 2025-142 establishing spending priorities for Measure I sales tax revenue in alignment with the ballot language approved by voters on November 5th, 2025.
And so just as, this was just to formalize the decision that was made during the retreat and prep us for the first set of participatory meetings that staff is arranging with each of you to, and especially focusing on the capital improvement program. But I felt it was important to get this formalized as we step into that budget process and that allocation process so it was clearly communicated when we're doing this workshops that this was now how council was approaching these expenditures, right? So, that's simply what this is, is to normalize that conversation that we had back in September.
Do we have any public comments on this side?
Yes, we do. Sarah, and Sarah will be first, sorry, let's see, Sarah, you can come forward. And as Sarah's going forward, she did have some questions concerning homelessness, which I believe would be pertinent for Joe and Councilmember Garcia and Mayor White pertaining to the ad-hoc's on this subcommittee, just like.
Yeah, so, well, can I, I think that's also part of this. So, I'm Sarah, homeless resident of Escondido, I'm new here, I've only been here since 2020. But I have two kids in Bear Valley Middle School and I am a social work student at Cal State San Marcos and I'm interning at Interfaith, not representing Interfaith, but my experience at Interfaith gives me a lot of insight into homelessness and I've used as much of my MSW program as I can to research homelessness. I'm sure you all hear a lot from your constituents about homelessness, it's, nobody likes to see it and I think that's probably how it comes to you most often. Of course, I entered social work because of a different, because of a more altruistic viewpoint on it. But as you consider Measure I, I voted in favor of Measure I, I'm a voter, and your number two thing was addressing homelessness. And I'm really aware that different people mean different things when they say addressing homelessness. And I wanted to urge you to consider that some of the research that I have been exposed to in my studies and also in my experience as a social worker is that housing is what causes homelessness, that it is the affordability gap between income and housing stock affordability plus life events. That's what causes homelessness. The homeless people that I interface with at Interfaith, that I serve, are residents of Escondido. I am an anomaly here. Most of the people that I come across in Escondido have roots in Escondido, they were born and raised in Escondido. The teachers at Bear Valley Middle have been there since like the school was built, it's amazing. I hope that I get to stay here and have that kind of a story here. Those clients that I serve that have been on the streets of Escondido for 30 years, soaked on heroin and are trying to turn their life around, they were born and raised here, this is their community. I'm so excited about the plans that you, you guys have in place for the rejuvenation. I love seeing the change in income, but I worry a little bit about gentrification and I wonder about who's being left behind. And I just would like to urge you to consider that when you talk about addressing homelessness, that the only way to address homelessness is to house people. I'm really excited to see all the housing being built, it's being built right in my neighborhood, not even bothered by the traffic it causes because I know how important it is. But I wonder if it's the right kind, I wonder if it's the kind people can afford. And I just want to make sure that our residents that are already here, that already have roots here, that have their families in schools here, that have dedicated their lives to this city, are not, are not getting left behind when we talk about investing in policing. As a social worker, I also want to just urge you to consider embedding social workers in with the police. I see more police vehicles in Escondido than anywhere else. We have lots of police, it's great, I feel super safe. I worry about my clients who are experiencing mental health crises and the police officers that may not be as equipped to. that may not be as equipped to handle those, whereas social workers know what resources to connect people with and how to get them help, so, thank you.
I want Frances from relay that first.
I'm Leila Zachfield, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Council, thank you for having my comments. I also wanted to share that I am a person who worked very, very, very hard on the Measure I, very, very hard. And the conversations that you had before and the conversations that you're about to have, the priorities, whatever priorities you set, if those are the priorities, I have a difference of opinion that, you know, I knew going in that this was general fund money, you could do whatever you want. We said those things, those things were listed for various reasons, many of which are very important to a lot of people, but elevating Escondido as a community was a huge part of what the people who worked on that proposal wanted, not just keeping safe. Those are ba, those are things that to me are humanity and basic needs. Elevating our community was really important. So whether or not you choose to you to set the priorities for Measure I as those priorities, which would then leave breathing room for the other kinds of things like the things you were just discussing, that's fine, but remember that the the people, and I I know that I'm speaking for many of the people that worked on this, that was the deal. We were told we were in such dire straits, I remember Joe talking about, we are not going to kick the can down the road anymore. We were in such dire straits with our budget, and we wanted to move beyond being a community in dire straits. And I understand there's all kinds of obligations and we're still not out of it, but please do not forget that the people who gave that beautiful gift to you want to see things other than potholes and policing. We want our neighbors to be taken here, but we also want there to be monies and room in those budgets for things like wonderful festivals, like the Center for the Arts, like ensuring that there are wonderful opportunities for our seniors. That's all I want to say, thanks.
You know, I was very touched for the first lady that's in the lot and is homeless and a funding home. You know, we think it's about people that are used on drugs or they don't have education, but I was thinking, why I don't even, sorry, I get so emotional because of this, why I don't even in Escondido, because I cannot afford a house, I cannot afford an apartment, so I moved to to San Marcos to be with my family because I cannot even afford a a room, one one thousand five hundred, and I'm a teacher, I'm a special education teacher, and I cannot afford a housing, so that's ridiculous, because, you know, we think like, oh, you can legally and blah blah. No, I did everything good. I paid thirty thousand dollars to come to the United States and do everything in the way you're supposed to do, but still, I don't have money for a decent house. So that's the only reason I moved to San Marcos, because since I came to the United States, I, you know, I pursue education, and I was working for a school district, anything was able for me, available for me. But still, I'm educated, I have my, I'm working for my credential, special ed, I'm a multiple suffer, bilingual teacher, but I cannot afford a house, that's ridiculous. I have been very embarrassed saying, I don't have a house, you know, well, everybody has it, and I understand, you know, I'm indigenous, I'm a woman, I don't even have a husband, I can't pay for a house for me. So I was very touched for the lady, like, you think, oh, that people that are used on drugs, they, that's why they don't have a house, but no, the reality, people that need our super high, do everything the way United States asks you to do and to be, want to be part of this community, I love the United States, like your own home, we cannot afford homes. So, well, I still live with my family, so I hope, Council, you think about, and I think about people that need our super high, anything, doing anything, even cleaning houses, even when you're a teacher, cannot afford a home, so.
Any other speakers on the side? See, Mayor.
Okay, just real quick, I think Leila said it perfect, and this is a great starting point for the council as we get out of the bad space we were in. And the great part is policy can be amended at any time, so as we start to get out and dig ourselves out of this hole, I think this can be amended to include more things and be a little bit more open for interpretation later on down the road, but I think this is a great starting point, so.
Yeah.
I.
No, I agree.
I I do too. That was the agreement that we made to our constituents. When we we said if this was going to be passed, this is what it would be used on, it would be for for essential services. Now, that does, to the Zachfields' point, this is kind of, we need breathing room for the meantime. Once we understand our general fund and we get out of that deficit that we're in, I think we, I think the five of us, I'm not sure, but I think I can speak for all of us, we fully intend to invest more in the community, arts, events, and all that, because it does elevate our economic development, it does elevate our culture, it does elevate a lot that we want to see. I think despite our backgrounds and maybe our political affiliations, I think we're all in agreement that that's what we want, so I totally agree, that is the goal, and we would, we definitely want to do it, so that's my comment, too.
Okay, thank you. Just, um, so we, the the sales tax measure went into effect in April, so it hasn't even been a full year, so I think once we know exactly like what a full year of that one cent sales tax looks like, we'll be able to better project like where monies can go. I think right now it's just being conservative because we don't really know what the full annual amount is of sales tax, right? So I think after that, I would definitely be open to expanding this, and once we kind of see what, you know, what's ahead and what the real numbers look like. So I appreciate all of your comments, very heartfelt comments, I agree with our community comments, and thank you for being here and for sharing such heartfelt feedback with us.
Yeah, I I agree with my colleagues, but again, keeping in sight that we have to take care of of these things and before we can we can spread, but absolutely, I'm, I'm in agreement. Keeping first things first.
The next twenty minutes, just kidding. It's the beginning. We have, out of the next twenty years, we we have, we're in the, we'll be in the hole about twenty million dollars a year for twelve years at least. So this is the the beginning, it's helping us to get to the place where we can get to, and and I think that we need to just continue, we've been putting Escondido on the map. In fact, I I forgot to mention that Sunday at the fair, I went interviewing booth after booth after booth, saying, I had a hard time finding anyone from Escondido. These were small business owners that were coming from all over the county, Riverside County, Orange County, because they had heard incredible things about Escondido and our fair, and I thought that was awesome, I really thought that was awesome, and this is just, it's 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 a beginning of where we need to get at, but we hear you, and and those are concerns that I wouldn't, I couldn't, as a church pastor, there's no way that I could afford a home. I just was blessed with a very intelligent wife that bought a mobile home, I live in a mobile home, twenty-five, twenty-six years ago. Otherwise, there's no way I could afford to buy. My kids, Ivy Degers, can't afford to buy. So those are the realities that we live with, but that doesn't mean that we have to stay like that. We have to do our best to make sure that we get out of that, so those are my comments.
All right, if that's it, I'll move to approve the Measure I spending priorities.
I'll second.
Great, let's vote, voting is up.
I see it, yeah, I see.
Please select one vote. There we go, I think it'll go through now.
There it is. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to a future agenda? If not, we'll move on to Subcommittee reports and other reports, and I'll just start, we can go down the line. A couple of weeks back, I came into my office and there was a stack of letters from a fourth grade class on my desk, so I reached out to the school to see if I could just come to the class to respond. They had written me about trees and trash and homelessness, so they had me in there, I was in there for about an hour, spoke for a little while, did a Q and A, and it was just a fun, kind of cool experience for us and for them. Today I went to, up to the San Pascual tribe and to celebrate their fiber optic completion, which was kind of fun, as well as Saturday was the first Native American Heritage Festival, and if you have not been to one of the Native American festivals in Escondido, please make it a priority to go to the next one, because they are a ton of fun. And Saturday I was at the street fair for twelve hours, they had me set up at five-thirty, yeah, and then didn't get home till about six, but it was an awesome day, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. So I attended the tenth anniversary of Ballet Folklorico Calislan's performance, and I know they were here with our Sister City band, which was really awesome, beautiful, incredible, at the Center for the Arts. I had a San Diego River Park JP Joint Powers Authority meeting and learned that our executive director will be retiring soon, so that was very sad news. And then we reviewed the budget in advance of the holidays, which, I'm on the Budget Subcommittee, so it'll be coming back to the full board, and of course, we see increasing costs everywhere as we do here in the city, so same thing, same picture outlook there at the San Diego River Park. San Diego River Park also does a lot of events, they they manage the Sykes Adobe House, which is right in front of the mall next to that golf golf place, and they had a big event called the California Native Plant Event, and it was really cool because they had all these kinds of California native plants, so I went and picked up some plants and some seeds, and they have experts there that tell you everything that you could ever want to know about plants, so really cool. And then I also received letters from the Philistine Elementary School students, I think they sent us all letters, and I just love hearing their perspectives, and they were talking about air pollution and all these other things, so I love when our youth are engaged with us and just, if they, for those of you that work in the schools, feel free to have your students email us, you know, we love engaging with them, and I I personally just love it so much, so that's all I have for this week, thank you.
One of the things that I enjoy the most is going to the schools and reading to the kids and and talking about bicultural and bilingualness and all kinds of stuff, it's so much fun, so yes, please, if you work at a school, let us know that something, there's somebody who works at a school himself as a teacher, so I think that's, that would be great. Utility Subcommittee, I I know, the Deputy Mayor and I are on the Utility Subcommittee, and it was the first time in in my time being on council there, and I understand the Mayor, Deputy Mayors also, so that was an interesting meeting. Tomorrow I have NCTD, although I'll let everybody know I'm going to be late, I have a funeral that I have to officiate, so as soon as I'm done with the funeral, I will be going very quickly to Oceanside for that meeting. I also attended the fair, I had a booth, I didn't get there as early as the Mayor at five-thirty, I was there by seven-thirty, but basically stood up the whole time, didn't have quite a chance to sit down, but it was, it was a great event, and and thank you to Two Streams that managed the the main stage, it was, it was a great event, a lot of fun, a lot of, a lot of things going on, going on. I also attended the ten-year anniversary of Calislan Ballet Folklorico and had the opportunity and privilege to present a proclamation in name of the entire City Council to Maricela Saucera, who's the director and visionary founder, so I had an opportunity to be able to do that, it was really exciting to hear and to see one of our sister cities' child and youth band that traveled from Oaxaca, from San Jacinto, eighteen members came and they played live while Ballet Folklorico Calislan danced to that, and then we made sure they had an opportunity to be able to do that at the street fair. So at nine forty-five, the band began playing, and then a little bit after ten, Calislan Ballet Folklorico came in and they did a portion of the show where they played live and the dancing, but it was just absolutely incredible to be able to see some of these dreams that we've had to see them begin to flourish. So that, that will be, that concludes my report.
My colleagues, all of you forgot to mention the mural.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. There's too much going on.
Yeah.
It's all yours.
Unacceptable.
It's all yours.
So we went to the mural unveiling, it's great, it's called Resilience, it's on the the canal, so if you guys have the opportunity to go there, it's on Rose, right, Rose and Washington, that's the street to get into it. Absolutely amazing, I recommend going there if you guys have a chance, probably this week, maybe this weekend if you want to go for a stroll. DBA Mixer is going to be tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to, you know, meeting up with our businesses and letting, and seeing what they've been up to and what they need help with, and I'll keep it short, so thank you to my community for the privilege of serving.
I too went to the Native American Festival, and it was just really an honor to be able to give them recognition, it it wasn't just the local Native American tribes, it was really Southern California, so that was wonderful. The Fall Festival this year just had such an energy, I know you guys felt it and saw it, and and the Chamber also included the the Green Expo, and to have that, it was just such a variety of things, so it was really exciting, good turnout, I loved the two stages, very interactive, and I I got, had a chance to be a judge in the costume contest, which was really hard, it was very sweet. Let's see, I had a meeting, well, I went to the San Diego Air Pollution Control District Board Meeting, and we were talking about the lithium fires came up, and I learned about a toxic chemical, a toxin that you really can't see or smell, the ones you see and smell, those are the ones that drop, but the ones that you can't, they travel, so I actually requested a study on that report, since we're going to be facing, or that's going to be coming before the council, so it'll be interesting to see what they report on that. At the mall on October thirtieth at one PM, there's going to be a Halloween celebration, trick or treating through the mall, and at one PM, I think it starts in the morning, and at one PM there's going to be a Halloween costume contest, so it'd be really cool if you could go, take the kids, have, walk around, get free candy at every store. I too went to the San Pascual Band of Clumii, ribbon cutting for the fiber optic, well, completion, and it's just really neat to see really how connected we are in that the people that are serving them serve us, and just being supportive was was really nice to be able to reciprocate that. The Rising Stars Program, it's a charitable foundation through the Chamber of Commerce, and that is for high school kids that have really overcome some great diversities, so it's not your straight A students, it's not necessarily the kids that are going to be college-bound, it it's kids that have overcome some homelessness, abuse, I mean, it's just incredible, but yet they're still succeeding and they have become mentors to others, and a lot of them want to get into a trade school, and so we provide scholarships, sometimes it goes for equipment or for the trade schools, so it's a really important thing, if you want to get involved with that or learn more, please reach out to the Chamber, or reach out to me, because again, it is serving our kids in this community, and then I'm trying to find ways to to connect them with people that can also have them intern and and get good jobs for them, and that is it.
City Manager?
Yeah, I have some unfortunate news. Today, the Resilience mural was vandalized.
Oh, my gosh.
So we are currently, we've been, we're connecting with the artist, we're actually power washing the 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 mural, and there will be a complete investigation, I can promise you, if we find out who's done it, we will pursue that as far as we can.
Let the public know.
I'll keep you posted, it looks like it was thrown paint on the on the on the mural, but I just needed to let you know, so if the community sees us out there washing it, we're trying to do our best to repair and and, but we will be investigating it and.
And he's out of town, he's in Indiana.
Yeah, 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 so so just just for, just just so you know.
So go by and see it, but imagine without the damage, because it is gorgeous.
Let's hope that we can, we can, we can mitigate that as much as possible, so.
No other public comments? This meeting is. This meeting is adjourned.